New faculty trustee Pat McDonald. He had to replace Dr. Amy Reed. Thank you for being here today. I would just know he's not. He's the new faculty trustee, but he's not new to New College having been here now thirty years. So. Welcome aboard.
Thank you.
Happy. Thank you. And also just remind everybody that this meeting has been noticed for two to four. We really need to stick to the schedule, please. So. I would appreciate everybody's assistance in getting everything done. In the time allotted. At this time, we're going to be moving into the public comment process of the meeting. The process is it's New College's policy that if you wanted to speak to the Board of Trustees, you have to get your request in at least forty-eight hours in advance of the meeting. And identify which item or items on the agenda you wish to address. Today, we have a list of eight people who have registered for public comment. Each commenter will have one minute to speak. Christie Fitzpatrick will call your name. You will be unmuted. And at the one-minute mark, you will be remuted. So with that, Christie, please call the first name on the list.
First up this afternoon, we have Mike Sanderson.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
Thanks. Starting with the consent agenda, you're voting on an information item. Are you all okay? Christie, I'm sorry. I was so harsh at Board of Governors. It's not your fault. Richard keeps dropping the ball. And speaking of the bog, USF is helping. You can watch the USF bog clip at mightybanyans.com. It sat on the open market for months this summer. Corcoran can't stop dropping the ball. I'm having so much fun. I have to remind myself, real people are being hurt. Chair Jenks, that includes you? This isn't your fault. You're not the one throwing interceptions. Watch the bog clip. Alan Levine can't even look. And who can blame him? It's like a coach was bribed to make Corcoran quarterback of their team, and now you're watching him fumble every other play. Florida people might prefer you find a reason to not break foundations statewide today with this unprecedented regulation. Just to drag this out more. Corcoran's only going to blame you for giving the power to do it. It's MPD, mightybanyans.com.
Next up, we have Rodrigo Diaz.
Hi.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead.
I have two comments. First, the board will vote today on a proposal to alter paragraph five point five of the collective bargaining agreement. Paragraph five point five specifies the role of faculty in changes to the academic program. As it is currently written, paragraph five point five requires student representation in faculty meetings that consider changes to the academic program. Altering paragraph five point five in the manner proposed would remove this requirement. I ask that the board leave paragraph five point five as it is currently written. Second, I ask that President Corcoran declare publicly, unequivocally, and unambiguously that he will not run for any elected office in 2026, but instead serve the remainder of his term till 2028. Thank you.
Next up, we have Pankoti Tassaklis. Not seeing that name, so I'll continue. John O. Miller.
I'm John O. Miller, president of NCF Freedom Regulation one dash one zero zero one. The college should not have two mission statements. Perhaps a vision statement. The Archimedes quote is that thought fragment makes no sense. The emphasis on Christian concepts is unbecoming for an institution claiming to repudiate indoctrination. Regulation three dash five one oh two, the current planning regulation is neither contrary to other requirements nor duplicative. You offer nothing to take its place. Overall, I think the board is delegating far too much decision-making authority to the administration. Regulation three dash seven zero one, giving so much power to the president creates a significant conflict of interest since the foundation is responsible for so much of its salary. Likewise, empowering the president to have complete control over the curriculum calls into question the role of the Board of Trustees. Your passive acquiescence and abdication of responsibility are not helping this institution be all it could be. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Benjamin Brown. Benjamin Brown, excuse me.
Good afternoon, everyone. I am the chair of the New College Alumni Association and an ex officio member of the Board of the Foundation. I hope when there is more time to more fully introduce you to the Alumni Association. But for now, I convey a resolution passed by the Alumni Association Board yesterday regarding changes to Regulation three dash zero zero one. The sense of the Alumni Association Board was that granting the president the power to remove Foundation Board members with no due process or requirement of just cause would affect the governance and fiscal oversight of the foundation in a negative way. My own detailed written comments submitted to you yesterday morning reflect much the same sentiment. The New College Foundation can one day have a great relationship with alumni as well as many other donors. I'm committed to getting there with you, and I'm constantly working with alumni to try to get them more involved in the foundation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, we have Alizana Salazar.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Hi, it's Eliana Salzower. I'm the mom of a recent alum. I have to say, I haven't participated in a while because I've just been mourning the loss of New College. It's absolutely heartbreaking. When my son goes to meet people for jobs, et cetera, the negativity around the name New College now, it's almost insurmountable. Instead of getting value out of his degree, instead of it launching him to greatness, instead of it being this stellar reflection of his academic achievements and his his, you know, really abilities, it's sort of this load, this weight around his neck that he has to explain away. That it was this amazing institution for honor students when he got in, where he went to what he thought, and the rug was pulled out from under him and our entire family. This was his college career that was completely destroyed by this takeover. The school is not the same standards. The enrollment is not to the same standard. The academic course curriculum, the professors, it's absolutely heartbreaking, and that's on you, and that's on your shoulders, and I hope you can turn it around. Thanks.
Thank you. Next up is Judy Burns.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Yes, hello. Today, I speak for the Uplands Association, a neighborhood association, and the one hundred and ten homes that are part of this subdivision. We are just north of the West Campus of New College. We are monumentally impacted by changes to the Uplands Preserve and the West Campus. President Corcoran, on July third, you wrote to us about collaborating and easing concerns about expansion and damage to the environment. We have concerns. The carryforward budget. You want to increase the budget for the recreation field by one hundred and fifteen thousand based on actual quotes, which are not provided here. That's on top of the nine hundred and ninety-one thousand already budgeted. How will you use this money? How is the board to vote when there are no supporting documents? The legislative budget notes that you will no longer pursue the purchase of airport land. Where do you plan to build athletic facilities? West Campus, Uplands Preserve? Traffic, parking, lights, noise, and the environment are major concerns. You wrote, you look forward to working together. Will you please collaborate? Thank you.
Thank you. Last speaker is Peter Shellhorn. Not seeing a Peter Shellhorn. I don't.
Can you hear me now?
Oh, go ahead.
Okay. The number one priority under the PICO Projects request is for a multipurpose building measuring one hundred six thousand three hundred ten square feet with detailed categorized breakdowns for designated use, space, size, and cost. Location to be determined. How is it possible you have drilled down to this level of detail without even knowing where the building will be located? It's highly likely you know exactly where the structural will be located and have chosen to withhold it, this information from the public. Residents of the Uplands are very concerned you are once again intending to place this Home Depot-sized building on what remains of the Uplands Preserve. I remind the board that during a recent formal gathering with Uplands residents, Richard Corcoran pledged to not build on the Uplands Preserve. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That concludes our public comment.
Thank you. I'm happy to conclude the public comment portion of our meeting today. Do not see the remainder of the agenda. You all have been supplied with the set agenda items. And I would ask if I can have a motion to approve.
They'll move.
They'll move. Okay, is there a second, please?
Second. Second.
Three seconds. Thank you. Any discussion? Nope. Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We oppose. Okay, motion carries. At this time, we will have the president, I invite Richard Corcoran, to say a few words to our board and any listeners.
Thank you, Madam Chair and Trustees. I'll try to be a little bit brief given the volume of the agenda today. Basically, I sent you guys the New College Florida headcounts. We're at eight hundred and sixty-two full-time students, and that is at or right at or ties a record in the history of the college. Secondarily, we had a total of three hundred and seventy-six entering students for the fall, and that broke last year's record of, I think, three twenty-four. So the enrollment is going well. In addition to that, we've been really enhancing our enrollment for this next coming year with a with the strategy that you've seen previously, but it's an implementation, and we have people all across the state and otherwise going out and recruiting those top students that are out there. Our student housing update, the only updating we can give you on that really right now is post Hurricane Milton. The portables that we have suffered some damage, creating water leakage, creating hole. We've secured housing very quickly with the neighboring hotels. We've made sure all the students are in those neighboring hotels and are safe for the remainder of the semester. We're currently undergoing what the remediation needs to take, what needs to take place, and we're working with the vendor. Ultimately, I told them at this point that there should, we do not anticipate at this point additional costs. Whether it's FEMA claims as a result of the hurricane or negotiations with the vendor, who our legal team, we think we're going to fight. But I'll keep you updated on that process. The fights that say that our students are in a wonderful hotel right now, right near the campus. The hurricane damage to the whole campus is somewhere in the ten to fifteen million dollar range. We have been going through up and down the campus and making sure that every single possible related thing to the hurricane is properly documented and turned in. So we'll have an update on that, and you see later in the agenda, but I'll let CFO discuss that in more, in greater detail. That we'll borrow from our reserve funds. The Board of Governors is fully aware of that, you understand it. I don't think we're the only university doing that as a result of the damage, so we can collect FEMA funds, but it would just be a temporary going into the reserves. Projects, when you guys get here next, the greenhouse should be done, Pittsburgh remodeling should be done. We're going to add the demo of another Palmer Building will be done. The volleyball courts, the park museum's down, the field is done. It just, the campus is starting to look just amazing, and so I think you'll see that. You'll also see the Jumbotron at the pool, which is getting used by the students, which is great. The license plate is done and it's official. We won't be able to purchase it until probably March first, but it's already out there, if you guys can see it. And I'm sure it's going to be a great seller and another revenue source for the school. The last thing I want to do real fast is we did have an audit committee meeting. Trustee Spalding in that audit committee meeting asked if trustee Clark could have auditor or trustee Clark himself just do a quick update on the audit of the foundation. So I'm sure I'd like to ask trustee Clark, either himself or Nice or auditor to give a two-minute update on the on the foundation, on the audit report of the foundation.
Trustee Carter.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I was going to turn it over. I've already asked our chief audit officer, Alex Tsumus, to brief us on that report. So Alex. I'm not sure if he has.
All right, everybody see me or hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, so I'll be brief. So as I talked with the audit committee about, we completed my work at the foundation to evaluate operating activity for the last six fiscal years from July twenty seventeen through June twenty twenty-three. I think it's important to note during that time only fifty thousand dollars of expenses for the foundation were dedicated to President Corcoran's compensation. Also during that time, the prior administration has been released, and it wasn't until March twenty twenty-three, so just recently, that new foundation executive, New Set Foundation Executive Director was appointed, and they are not involved in the operating deficits and negative cash flows that I identify in this report. The report shows us, based on the audited financial statements, that during the six-year period under review, the foundation deficits totaled nine point six million dollars with negative cash flows from operating activities of eight point two million. Administrative budget overages coupled with the inability to achieve unrestricted fundraising goals ultimately culminated in a fiscal year twenty twenty-three deficit and unrestricted funds of two point one million dollars. So, you know, the foundation was in pretty dire straits when this new administration arrived. The the finance information provided to the Foundation Board and its committees really didn't seem to provide a clear understanding of the spending of unrestricted funds, the significant negative cash flows, and the overages, consistent overages and budget overhead. So ultimately, the chair of the Finance Committee decided that he would need to approve the use of restricted funds to cover New College Foundation administrative payroll and overhead because he just didn't have the money to essentially meet their operating budget. So the report ultimately shows that the administration prior to this one failed to achieve its unrestricted fundraising goals, adhere to its approved budget. Essentially, since the new administration has been here, things have done a hundred percent turnaround. We've been able to cut foundation overhead by fifty percent. We've more than tripled unrestricted cash donations. And the twenty twenty-four audited financials now show that rather than a two point one million dollar deficit in unrestricted funds, we actually have a one point eight million dollar surplus. So we've turned things around rather quickly in the last twelve to eighteen months, but things were in pretty dire straits when when this administration and this board arrived.
And then, Madam Chair, the other two updates for some of the trustees, as you may have read, the governor invited several trustees, alumni, so general counsel to a mission to Italy. It was very successful. Right now, we're working and going back and forth with some of the contacts that we made on opportunities for exchange programs, student exchange programs, faculty exchange programs. And we're working on MOUs with the individuals and hope people have that announcement in short order, but it was an excellent trip, and everyone got to spend a lot of time with the governor and with a lot of staff that will be obviously huge have a huge impact for us coming into this legislative session starts in March. And then the final thing is we're starting to ramp up the hiring process again. The hiring process, we anticipate the growth. We're adding six more sports again, so we're continuing the aggressive growth, but with the growth, we'll have additional faculty needs and some existing line needs, and we'll keep you updated on that process, too.
Thank you. Okay. We're going to address on the agenda the student temporary housing purchase orders.
I have a few questions for the president, if I may. Thank you. In the last meeting, I know we discussed the financing of new dorms, and I was wondering if there was an update on where we are at in the financial process and what the timeline would look like for building new dorms.
We had another pretty close to a final meeting, trustee Mickelson, with our consultant, so with the banking different options. So hopefully at the time we meet, we'll be able to bring forth all of the different options that are available, and a recommendation will join us here most urgently, so for New College moving forward, and we'll keep posted on that.
Thank you. And are there any updates on the master planning process as of right now?
On the master plan process, we continue, we've had, we restarted, we're restarting the master plan. Process will have an additional, the additional hearings, and hopefully we'll have a preliminary rendering very similar to the ones that you've seen for the last year at the other public hearings that will bring forth, and thank you for posting on that.
Thank you.
I have one quick question.
Yes.
Yes, any update on use of the pay front? Well, there's, I'm curious to know if there's an update on the use of the pay front. I noticed, I mean, we could talk later about the legislative budget request and then the idea of not having land from SRQ. I'm wondering if any of that.
Oh, what, on some of the, I guess, we're bringing some of the public comment.
Yeah, but I'm in particular, I'm interested in that, yeah.
This pay front, are you talking about the offlet?
The uplet's pay front.
Yeah, so nothing's changed. You know, I mean, literally, two of the public comments basically created a controversy that came out of thin air and doesn't exist, and then asked us not to do that. I mean, we're not building the, and all of the master plan renderings, that building that they're talking about is is a long door walkway, and nothing's changed. It's still a long door walkway. It will always be a long door walkway. Just because we, the reason we don't say specifically where it's going right now is because we don't have an approved master plan, so I can't. But that's all of the renderings, and nothing's changed. I have had a meeting with them, and I have told them that there's no anticipated or myself, you guys are ultimately the approvers, but we're not pushing for construction along the Uplands part of the neighborhood. What you see is what we have. We have the park that we just did. It survived both hurricanes. We put on the saltwater resilient grass. It looks fantastic. We're doing some finalization of it, but it's just absolutely wonderful. The volleyball courts will be done probably in the next thirty days, certainly before the end of the year. The volleyball courts are in art, the bayfront, not in the Uplands part, and the park is on the Uplands part, and it's beautiful, and I promise you, just like the controversy that we experienced. Oh, you can't put, you know, big grass out in front of the library and out in front of the classroom building, and now even today, because the weather's starting to turn, and you can't, you can't find a in some days, you can't find a green spot on that turf because the students are all over it because it's so wonderful, and we built another place for them with President Mickelson, you know, in consultation with her, behind the library where we have the elevated steps, and that's all. So now kids can go out there, students can go out there and read and study and what have you. But on the Bay Frontier specific question, I met with them, I told them that I was not recommending anything. If you can find somebody who says I've broken my word, I'll apologize, but I'm a man of my word, and nothing has changed. And the controversy's created about building some massive building on that, that's their creation, and they want us to say no to it. I'll say no to all of the creations of things that don't exist.
I understand. So in summary, no changes.
In summary, no changes.
That's all, that's all I wanted was just.
I was interested in talking about that here.
No, 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 I'm talking about the bay.
Please, is there any questions?
Sorry, just to, President Corcoran, just to clarify, my understanding is we are doing some work on the pier immediately out front that was caused by some damage, so we shouldn't confuse that. That's not an update. That's just a something that people might notice. Is that correct?
Yes, and that's this thing from what trustee McDonald was talking about, that, so the bayfront is all of the stuff that we have. The part that he was talking about is just the Uplands, which is, you know, basically behind the psychology building all the way towards the USF property. And that has already been fixed to trustee Spalding.
My point was activity on that pier should not be mistaken for some nefarious plot to build a super-duper new complex out there.
No.
Okay.
Okay.
Mr. President. You might want to tell them that we have finalized the closing on the nine acres or so. Oh, yeah, and I don't know if you saw, did you go base and it was in my presidential updates that the nine acres is officially closed and is officially new colleges. And so now we can begin in that master plan process and what we would do with that nine acres, and there is anticipated building on the nine acres.
Great.
And thank you, trustee, I mean trustee, thank you. General Counsel Galvano, obviously, his knowledge of all of that and relationships, but then just tremendously beneficial in making all that happen. Oh, the other thing I just quickly say, too, because it was raised, you know, we have trustee McDonald, we have that property for another thirty-three years, thirty-two years, and it will get resolved, and I think what happened in November will expedite the resolution with the FAA.
Great. I now invite Christie Fitzpatrick, who is Vice President, Finance Administration, Chief of Staff, to explain the next agenda item, item five, which is the student temporary housing disorders. University of South Florida, Arizona, MNT. Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I will be very brief on this subject. It's just more of a formality to present before the Board of Trustees, but this is regarding an additional amount that we had to add to the purchase order that we have in place with University of South Florida on the additional beds that we currently have ninety beds that we had secured at the beginning of the academic year for nine hundred and forty-four thousand. We had to add an additional sixteen beds, the cost of a hundred and fourteen thousand to this purchase order, which requires, we've exceeded now the threshold of a million dollars requiring it to come before the board. So this request is asking for approval of the additional amount that's been added. The reasoning for this is what the president mentioned earlier regarding we needed some additional beds because of the situation with the modulars and wanting to put our students, you know, in the same areas as we already have ninety other students residing. So that's this issue, Madam Chair.
Thank you. May I have a motion to approve the student temporary housing purchase order with the University of South Florida, Arizona, MNT, please?
Move to approve.
Thank you, trustee Carter. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, trustee Patterson. Any discussion? Any none? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, lifetime? Okay, motion carries. I don't know if you noted that, because there came on like grass.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, item six, we have an update to the university E and G carryforward spending plans fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five. And again, I would ask this Christie Fitzpatrick to explain this matter to us.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So as the president's referenced in his presidential update earlier, we have this request before you today is just modifying our carryforward spending plan to reflect that we will be using two point five million of the seven percent reserve that we have set aside. And this is pursuant to bog regulation and statute that allows us in an emergency situation to use the funding that's set aside in the seven percent reserve. In this situation, we believe that two point five at least will get us started on being able to make the improvements related to the damages caused by Hurricanes Milton and Helene and be able to handle these while we process the FEMA claim, which we are currently underway with. There's also a few additional adjustments to some amounts from what you you all saw earlier this year on the carryforward plans. Most of that, the total dollar amount has not been adjusted from what was reflected originally, put before you all and approved. It's just a matter of just aligning the dollars to more what the project needs are across campus. That's the item, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Can I have a motion, please, for the approval of the updated university E and G carryforward spending plans fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five?
They're moved.
Thank you, trustee Spalding, Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
All right, trustee Carter, thank you. Any dis- All right, trustee Carter, thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed lifetime? Seeing none, motion carries, thank you. Um, this this Patrick, you're going to be on again. This is for the update item seven of the agenda. Update to the twenty twenty-five uh twenty-six legislative budget request, we're going to be on um for the fixed capital outlay.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This item just uh fully reflects the removal of the priority two that we had listed previously, which was land acquisition of the airport. Um, this item has been removed and therefore we've just moved the remaining priorities up the list. That's what this item is.
Thank you. Um, may I have a motion, please, for the approval of the updated twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six? LBR um for fixed capital outlay.
So moved.
Thank you, trustee Castler, is there a second?
Second.
All right, it will give me that. Oh, okay, uh, thank you. Um, any discussion?
Yes. Please.
Okay.
It's very. Just very quickly, uh, I was under the impression that that land would be used for athletic facilities. Um, is there a change? I mean, if we're not going after that land, what's the plan?
No, we still are. Um, but there's two, there's two components. The one component. Is moving up our Pico requests. We had a people request for number six man to get to the give or take to get the eleven and a half. That was the deal with the airport mutually agreed to. Um, so now we're just, that's off because we don't have the FAA approval temporarily. And so we moved up the other priorities of the Pico list. The secondary part, um, not not what you're doing, but is. The money that we did get appropriated for that um uh. Uh, that part of the property um will now use that for other other purposes until we get approval for the airport. But nothing's changed on that front either. We're again, that's part of the master plan process, waiting for approval for that to be done. For the bulk of the bridge over there to build those facilities. So really nothing, this is very kind of fun nature.
I understand. But once again, nothing's changed with respect to athletic facilities.
That is correct.
Okay, any other questions? Seeing none, um, do I have a motion for approval of the. I have a motion, so it's called a vote. Um, all those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Seeing none, motion carries. Um, last item for Miss Fitzpatrick, moment, uh, I do eight. Um, Miss Fitzpatrick, can you please provide us with your overview of the green fee review?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so the green fee, this particular item is just under review by the the Board of Trustees. We were requested by the Board of Governors pursuant to Regulation seven point zero zero three. That requires the board to review of a. Individual fee, which this is for uh new college, the only institution that has a green fee in place. This was um established in two thousand and twelve, needs to be reviewed every five years. So. This particular fee was um put in place for sustainability projects on campus and rec- as recommended by student government. Uh, most of the funds are funding the students' food forest at the Capels Campus right now. Um, it's the recommendation of the staff and the president to continue the fee at this time.
Thanks. May I have a motion, please, for approval of the simulation of green fee?
So move.
Okay, thank you, trustee Patterson. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Thank you, trustee Powerline. Um, any discussion?
I I said I said a question, this, did you say we're the only institution pays such a fee?
Correct.
Why is that?
What?
Okay. We're the only one that collects such a fee. So it was decided back in two thousand and twelve, I guess, that we would implement um a green fee. On campus and it's a dollar. Per credit hour for the students right now that we pay, that the students pay. So we collect about twenty-five to twenty-eight thousand dollars a year. For that, and that was determined at that time.
And this doesn't renew if trustees follow five years, just for law regulation we go through. Every five years, look at the fees and update at any point in time. The trustees can make a different decision based on on other information, but. At twenty-five thousand dollars, we have a professor now that's very engaged in that with the students, uh, who's a fantastic biologist and so. Um, at this warrant conditions continue.
Uh, I'm not going to object. I'm just knowing the fact that no other institution does it. It's an outlier.
Okay, we got the motion made and a second and discussion. All those in favor of people with potential green fee say aye.
Aye.
Seeing no opposition, motion carries. Thank you, Miss Fitzpatrick. Um, at this time, I'd like to call on David Brickhouse, Vice President, Legal Affairs and Human Resources. To address the board on the um collective bargaining agreement. Brickhouse, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We have a host of personnel issues before the board. Um, first in your packet, we have before the board is a twenty twenty-three to twenty twenty-five collective bargaining agreement between New College of Florida and the Police Benevolent uh Association. This most notably reflects a five percent increase in the base hourly wage, uh, which if you remember last year, they received in comparison, five point two five percent. So this represents another historic increase for our police officers on campus. I'm happy to stand for any questions as to any of the other items uh in this CBA.
Any questions?
Thank you. The federal procedures let him explain the three and then we'll take a single motion.
Okay.
Okay, you need to do a single motion.
So continue on, yeah, on the second item, your item now.
So the second item is approval of a ratification of um of. The MOU between New College and the Faculty Union regarding faculty retention bonuses. And essentially this, if you recall, last year before the board, there was a MOU presented providing retention bonuses based off of proviso language from the legislature and the Board of Governors. The Faculty Union asked us to include um an additional ten. Uh, unit members that were excluded by the proviso language. The administration uh. Agreed to that change and recommends adoption of the amended MOU. The third item before you, unless there's any questions, the third item before you is a ratification of the collective bargaining agreement between New College of Florida and the uh. Uh, New College uh UFF. And again, there's a host of changes in this collective bargaining agreement. Um, principally, again, is is a five percent increase in base salary up to a hundred thousand with a cap of five thousand. Um, if you make over a hundred thousand dollars. I'm happy to to answer any questions that you have based off of any of the other changes, but you will see reflected in the packet, a summary. A high level summary of each of the section changes that were made.
So at this time, I'll ask for a motion uh to approve the approval of the ratification altogether. Uh, of the updated collective bargaining agreement between New College of Florida and the Florida Police Benevolent Association. The approval of ratification of updated collective bargaining agreement between New College of Florida and the United Faculty of Florida and amendment to faculty retention bonus MOU. And approval of recommendation for changes to salary and benefits for out of unit employees. Can I have such a motion, please?
So moved.
Thank you, trustee Castler. May I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, trustee Mackey. All right, any discussion on these um collective bargaining agreement items?
Madam Chair, this is unorthodox, but as General Counsel, I. Just wanted to recognize the great work that Vice President Brickhouse did in negotiating these agreements. Bringing them forward today. These are not. Not easy task and a lot of moving parts, but bringing everybody together is quite impressive.
Thank you. Thank you. Um, so let's uh, all those in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Like sign? Seeing none, motion carries and thank you, Mr. Brickhouse. People are happy with these uh changes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I I will tell the board, uh, the Faculty Union in particular. Voted to ratify the changes with a ninety-eight point six percent vote for approval. Um, so that's a, I think, a fairly historic vote margin.
That's great. Thank you. Um, we are now on to uh item ten on the agenda. And these are regulation updates. I'm going to call again on David Brickhouse, Vice President, uh, Legal Affairs and Human Resources to walk um. All one.
Yeah, I think these.
Odo.
Probably. He asked to be separated at some point, so. Fine, so so why don't we? Why don't we start them differently than we did the last agenda, but take the motion and a second, open it up for questions and discussion.
Do we want?
Present motion, yeah. Yeah, we'll get get the motion for approval on second, then go into questions.
All right, so we're going to do it this way. I'm going to ask for a motion. For approval of regulation amendment one dash one zero zero one. Mission statement and goals. Could someone make that motion, please?
So moved.
Okay, trustee Spaulding, may I have a second?
Second.
Trustee Powerline, okay, Mr. Brickhouse, would you like to?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, this amendment. Uh, revises the regulatory mission statement set forth in the new college regulations manual. I I do just want to take a note to to reflect that this does nothing to change the statutory mission of New College of Florida as the state honors college. Or as a residential uh honors college. This simply changes what the Board of Trustees sets forth in its regulations as the mission statement. With that, I'll yield for any questions.
Do we have any questions of the trustees? These items were obligated to you previously.
Yes.
Okay, I hear I recognize trustee McDonald.
Yes, um. I guess this is in discussion, so it's more a comment than it is a question. So uh, this is badly written in ways that are going to hurt the college. It opens with a quote from Archimedes and it closes with an awkward attempt to shoehorn the work of Archimedes into the service. That it in no way is designed to address. Now, this is not good and it's not beautiful. Um, it's bad practice and it's ugly. But more is true, right? That the construction itself, it undermines. The very message I assume it's trying to deliver. If we want to credibly deliver on claims of involving the good, the beaut- the beautiful, the true, why should we begin with something that's not? People will notice. And their opinion of the college will suffer. I know they'll notice. The faculty who saw an earlier version noticed, so did students and so did alumni. People will also notice what it doesn't say. It does not reference the statutory mission of the college and that's important. It's our fiduciary responsibility, respect statute. The statute with respect to new colleges' mission is clear. In addition, the Florida Constitution gives the BOG the right to resp- and the responsibility. To establish the distinctive missions of each S U S member. BOG will notice, it's their job. So I want to be clear, I'm not against a change in the mission statement. I welcome one. I'm against this statement because it's badly written and it will discredit the college. I move that we postpone until a better version. Be. Put forth.
Would you say, Madam Chair, uh, that good conversations with trustee McDonald? Having said that, this has been a year-long process. We sent out a draft. Of the responses we got, I will put them in two categories. Uh, basically, one category are responses that I could not say on this um publicly. Um, and completely non-construtive, I mean constructive and and. About the. The other category was basically, really, I'd say three categories. The other category was don't do a thing, leave it, leave it as is. And the third category is a lot of confusion about people thinking that we're changing the statutory language, which we are not. Confusing, completing mission statement from that which is a statute. Just despite us sending them out. And those are the responses we received. I don't recall, um, I didn't go back and look. That I don't recall anybody taking the time to put a pen to paper and writing some sort of mission statement. Uh, which, as you heard from trustee McDonald, there's no, there isn't. Some, who isn't an objection to a different mission statement. Um, but we never received, as far as I know, one of those. What we did receive from. Administration and from certainly, uh, many of the trustees were very um excited and. And we s- received drafts. We shared that, we shared that draft as an original. And then, and the biggest complaint was it was too long, so we condensed it. And I think what we have for you is it's long overdue and I think it is well-written and I appreciate the input of everybody. And it doesn't mean trustee McDonald that. The extent that you put something together, want to share it down the road, we'll be glad to look at it and evaluate whether that puts us in a more prestigious. Uh, in better spot as as a college.
Madam Chair, if I may, we do have a motion which requires a second. We need a second.
Yeah, well.
I thought.
Yeah.
Discussion now.
Yeah, yeah.
No, you made a motion withdrawing that motion.
No, I'm not withdrawing that motion.
There's a second, then you'll proceed on that motion. Otherwise, we'll return to discussion.
Could you uh repeat what the motion was exactly?
The motion is to postpone.
Hmm.
Right, so that means we don't vote on this until we've had a chance to actually think about the damage that it will do to the college.
I second that.
Hey, I'm ready for a second.
There is, this motion does allow discussion.
Yeah.
On the motion to postpone.
So if there's anything to step in on the motion to postpone?
Yeah, I I I've been interested in in two practical things. I mean. Um. Uh, the 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 writing of a mission statement is a complicated matter. Uh, I think this is a, I think the old mission statement was uh messy and long and 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 had all sorts of problems. And the new one, I think, is much shorter. It actually has some historical references and things like that. But two points have been made here. Uh, I like the clarification. We've already been working on this for years, I understand. Uh, I've actually been quite involved throughout the whole process. I think it's extremely important. Seeing all the progress and whatnot. Um, uh, with. President Corcoran, what 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 are our responsibilities to? Does this go to the BOG? What is, what is the process? Is there a timeliness? Um, uh. And then, and secondly, a point has been made that this this uh, this mission statement is dangerous. That strikes me as uh a pretty of. Uh, significant claim that would need to be established.
Yeah, I, to your point, trustees following the chief. It's been, it's been a journey. I think it's, it's long overdue and. And I mean it with the utmost respect, there just was not constructive alternative ever proposed all of this time. Um, and so, uh. Uh, we'd love more engagement. Um, I was saying to one of the trustees today. That, you know, we got great student involvement on. The mascot, again, you know, or inappropriate, but the other students are interesting, others are, who knows? Versus campus. Um, but then on things like this, there's no. We did the same solicitation, the same notice, the same publication. Love, love that process. Um, but yeah, once we, once you guys approve the mission statement, we'll be sent it up to the the Board of Governors.
So I hear trustee McDonald asked, we heard, then I will recognize trustee who vote.
We'll close, he closes.
I'm sorry, just to. Just to clarify, the tactical question. It it has to go to the Board of Governors to be approved? Is there a timeline? Is it have to be done by a certain time? What is?
No, we just send it to the Board of Governors and let them know that we've all turned.
My turn.
You get to close if there's no more discussion.
This is.
This is on motion.
On the motion. So any?
I have a question um for Professor McDonald. So i- i- is is it a? Language and stylistic question? Uh, I'm. I'm even, you know, perhaps partial o- o- open to the idea of. You know, striking the 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 quote at the top for just a concise mission statement, or is it the content of the actual? Uh, uh, mission statement that is most disturbing to you? I'm hoping you can clarify.
Sure, I'll I'll clarify. I mean, there are a number of problems. The first is that. The idea behind the mission, I assume that the central idea is that new college is a place. Where good and the beautiful and the true. Are actually things we take seriously. And I don't think this mission statement does that. I think what it does. By trying to leverage a quote of Archimedes into. An ending sentence where it doesn't belong is create something that's actually nasty looking. And and the problem with that is that it actually undermines. The stated mission in in the rest of the statement. It makes, so that in itself makes no sense to me. But I think it should be reworked.
The the motion pending.
In addition, in addition.
Wait, but the motion pending is a motion to postpone.
Correct.
We're not really here to.
I'm sorry.
Merits.
You're absolutely right. I will answer that later.
Any other, any other discussion regarding the motion now on the floor, which is a. Any other, any other discussion regarding the motion now on the floor, which is a motion to postpone?
I have, um, some discussion. I talked with many students who did not receive or remember receiving any communication about. The mission statement and its draft following the meeting, I believe it was in April. For myself, as a trustee and student representative, I didn't receive any updates. Or have the opportunity to give feedback because the process was not communicated in a clear way. Although it may have been. On a website, uh, many students and other people that I have talked to. Did not clearly know how to access this and the process was not made accessible. To the majority of, um, the. New college community, so I was wondering. How many trustees actually received information about this statement? Prior to when we received our packet, what, a week ago?
We disseminated it, um, to the, the same forum, the same people in the same way as previous. We can get for you, uh, just like we did with the. Spoke to you earlier, just like you know, uh, mascot. Um, and we had tons of student replies, we did have student replies, we can gather those forty on the mission statement. So, obviously very inappropriate, um, but we did, um, numerous students did participate in the process. And no, that it wasn't a process out there that existed, but we communicated in the exact same way we've done everything else. Where we've had much more heightened participation. Uh, 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 I don't believe the communication was finished. And I can get the, I can get the dates, times, names, they're all, they're all, they're all.
Okay, so the. The, the motion pending hours, does anybody, is it who, is there? Uh, a show of hands of who's in favor of?
Wait a second.
Me, Trustee McDonald's, and close on the motion.
Okay, and close on the motion.
Yes, okay, so I would, um, I'd like to contest. President Corcoran's statement about participation. Uh, there's an email chain, a long email chain, several exchanges with the chairs of the faculty, asking for updates. And information on the mission where we stood in asking to participate, it's also not true that, that. They fall into these three categories, there was overwhelming consensus in the faculty. For a mission statement that reflects the statutory mission, that is a fact. Faculty voted on this and put it forward. Right, so it's just not true that it falls into these three categories. That being said, I think the thing that we're looking at doesn't do those things, it doesn't say what actually happens at New College. It doesn't say who it's for, it doesn't do the things a mission statement is supposed to do. Right, I, I give you that it's reasonably short, but it does a bad job at what a mission statement is supposed to do. And it undermines itself, it's not credible and it will, it will make the, it difficult to sell.
Question on the motion.
So, I'm calling the question on the motion, all those in favor of? The motion to postpone the approval of the mission statement, raise your hands. I see three, all those opposed to postponing the approval of the mission statement, raise your hands. So.
That's the majority.
Yeah.
I counted four.
Seven.
Seven, four, okay. Now.
We're back on the main.
We're back on the main questions. And discussion of, uh, the mission statement as presented, is there? Um. Further discussion of that? Dusty Powerline, yes?
I would not, um, object to the deletion of the Archimedes quote. Yeah, I, I, I want to, you know, kind of piggyback on that, I, I think stylistically, there may be two, uh, some minor adjustments we could make that. Might also, uh, help resolve some of, uh, Professor McDonald's issues and I think would improve it generally. Striking the quote at the top, I, I think. Would probably, uh, I, I'd be in, in favor of that and then. Changing the opening preposition, um, in man's long struggle to something like as part of. Uh, it, it's a bit that, that. The word in is, is a bit, would be, I think, a bit awkward, um, or, or might need to be changed. But I think overall, the, the, the mission statement, uh, is, is very strong, I, I think it gives a sense of the. Orientation, the tradition, historical importance and. Uh, I know when I drafted something quite different, uh, uh, at the very beginning of this process. I, you know, penned the, the first draft, this has changed a lot since then, I think it's gotten better. Um, it's had the participation of many people, uh, and I think that it's still though. Uh, you know, one of the things that I did was I looked at the. M- mission statement and the first, uh, statements of the founders of New College of Florida. From, you know, the, 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 the beginning period around nineteen sixty. And this to me still maintains a fidelity to the original mission that they articulated. Um, it has, uh, some of the same language, some of the same concepts, and so I, I, I think it's. It's, it's very good, you know, but could perhaps use, uh, these, you know, two stylistic, uh, changes before we, before we approve it.
Sorry, for clarification, uh. Trustee Rufo, that I, I, I agree with the first point about. Uh, dropping the Arch- Archimedes quote as a formal part of the mission statement, it can be on the side, I'm, I'm no objection using it. But it shouldn't be part of the formal, I, I'm fine with that, what was your second? Your second.
The, 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 the starting preposition, maybe I'm, maybe I'm wrong, I defer to, uh, Trustee Bowerline here, our English, uh, professor, but, uh. Yeah, Mark, do you think the, 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 the beginning, uh, the, the first w- word is a bit awkward?
I, I like your as part of.
Yeah, because I think the idea is participating in a tradition, participating in a scholarly community. Uh, you know, uh, New College is, is, is a great college, but it's only, it's only one.
Okay, but a- again, I'm sorry, for, for, for clarity, you're saying what? Drop the word.
To strike the word in and replace it with as part of.
As part of.
Well, as part of man's long struggle to defeat ignorance by pursuing truth.
Yes.
I think it's, I think it's, it's, it, I think it's a better, a, a better framing.
I would, yeah. Yeah, I, I, I agree with both of those changes and would suggest dropping the final sentence too.
Yes.
Together, beginning with together. Since we, the moving the earth.
Is a reference.
Has no, uh, it's not grounded, if you get rid of the Archimedes quote. So I say drop the first sentence, the last sentence and change the. Change what becomes the first ends in the way that Trustee Rufo has sagely recommended.
Well, I, I will disagree with the last sentence, I think the last sentence is great, uh, and I think that. Having moved the earth as an, a, a kind of literary allusion, uh, will, will be understood by our, uh, you know, esteemed and highly educated. Patrons and friends, um, and I think it, 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 it really signifies not only the concept of leverage. But also the concept of the organization of the cosmos, the earth moves in rotation. Uh, and I think that it, uh, to, 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 to me, uh, to me, it's implicit and, and it's fine, uh, a- as such.
Yeah, the problem with you, if you, if you drop the last sentence, you, you, you lose the reference to the good, the true, the beautiful. As well as the eternal verities, which I think is crucial to.
Yes, well, yes, I, I, that's part of the advantage of it, I think, of dropping it.
Yes, I agree with.
Proposals, my recommendation, Madam Chair, is let's vote on deleting the last sentence and resolve that. And then the next motion would be delete Archimedes quote at the top and change the intro from the end to as part of. But the first one, I think, because there seems to be disagreement, is elimination of the last sentence. So, if, if we could, uh, if I could phrase. Professor Kessler's or Trustee Kessler's motion is to delete the last sentence and vote on that. And then we could go to the second.
Is there a second to Trustee Kessler's?
Oh, yeah.
Motion to drop the last sentence of the proposed mission statement.
Second.
Okay. Any, all in favor?
Aye.
This is all in favor of deleting the last sentence, so if you're in favor, we're eliminating the last sentence, if you want to keep the last sentence. My preference. Then you would vote against deleting the last sentence, so this is a motion to delete the last sentence.
Okay, I understand, so, and, so those who are in favor of deleting the last. Set- sentence. I see one, I see two, I see three. Okay, all, all those opposed. Light sigh, meaning raise your hands, though I'm opposed. Okay.
Motion fails.
Motion fails.
So now, the second motion, if you, you're right, Trustee.
Yeah.
Um, Janice.
Yeah.
Is deleting the Archimedes quote at the top. And changing the initial word from in to as part of.
Okay, so.
Let's root those. Is there a second?
Well, just for the record, I, I actually like the Archimedes quote, but whatever, um, the issues are with Archimedes, um.
I second the motion, if you need a second.
Yeah, so, so the. So the motion now is to remove the first sentence, change in to be restated as part of. Okay, so that's the motion, who seconded it?
So, I, Trustee Castle.
Castle seconded, okay, all of us in favor? Of the mission statement as revised. Make a show of hands, aye.
Ho- ho- hold on, hold on. Are we admitting or approving the whole thing?
We're, we're on the amendment.
This is the amendment.
Proposed, and then we'll go back to the main question as amended.
Yeah.
These are just the amendment.
Yeah, examine, all those in favor of the proposed amendment, say aye.
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 Okay. All those opposed to the proposed amendment? First, I, first, all day, one, okay. The proposed amendment carries now. We go back to.
Out on the mission statement as amended.
The mission statement as amended.
We had discussion on it.
Yeah, so, all those in favor.
Have that already. Alright, yeah.
So. Um, all those in favor of approving the mission statement as amended. Right?
No.
Uh, show of hands, say aye. I'm not second, see, okay, all those opposed, no. Okay.
Two, two of them.
Two opposed, okay. Congratulations, we have. Mission statement that. Is not changing the statutory language of Mitchell's College. We move on now to the. Next.
Open for a motion on the.
Yeah.
Three point.
I need a, a motion.
Sorry, can I, can I raise something on that? Uh, before we leave that, the, the mission statement. Um, is it a matter of course, or do we need a motion, I would like to, to, to underscore the point about. The statutory language that the, the, the mission statement, when it's promulgated on the website and else- elsewhere. Is done so along with the statutory language, is that normally the case, or do we need to actually instruct that?
The, the statutory language will always be the authoritative language, and if you look at the mission statement that was amended, it was not. Reference, so that's, that controls, this, this doesn't impact it, it doesn't need to be reiterated to give it authority.
We'll, and we'll make that clear, Trustee Spaulding, on all, uh, website, where we have that kind of information with our just mission statement.
Right. Okay.
So now we're moving on to requesting a motion for approval of regulation amendment three dash one zero zero two. For tuition and fees schedule, can somebody make that motion, please?
Move to approve.
Thank you, but, okay, the motion for, uh. To approve, I need a second. Dom Patterson, Trustee Patterson, thank you, okay, David Brickhouse, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair, this amendment provides, is here to provide greater flexibility for the college relating to event rentals. And delegates to the president the ability to establish fees and costs relating to the licensing or event rental of, of college property. And as you'll see in the strike through language, there was caps that were set forth in how much the college could. Obtain for event rentals, um, and so there, those are outdated and not within the market. Um, so we're looking for authority for the president to set and establish new rates, um, and happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, we have motion, a second, any discussion? See, see none, all those in favor of approval of the, uh, regulation amendment three dash one zero zero two, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? No opposed, motion carries. Okay, next, I need a motion, please, for the approval of the regulation amendment three dash five one zero two. College land use planning and utilization policy. And someone, someone will approve. Yes, Trustee Park has moved, may I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, Trustee Mackey, a second to the, uh, motion, can we have some discussion, David, um, Brickhouse?
Thank you, Chair, this is a strike-all amendment that rescinds, uh, regulation three dash five one zero two. If you remember last year, the Board of Trustees repealed the Campus Master Plan Regulation, this was a corresponding regulation. The land use planning process is established and, and is guided by the Campus Master Planning Process. So the, the master planning process incorporates land use planning. And that's included in the master plan that will be presented to this board at the conclusion of this process, so it's a, it's, they strike all amendment.
Any discussion?
I have a question.
Yes.
So. There was no link to actually, the master planning part, it would have a kind of reference to this, so it's very difficult for me to understand to what extent. Some of the. I, um, details of the thing we're striking are going to be preserved. In the master planning.
So the master plan accounts for the, the land use, the, the, the building use, whether it's academic, whether it's residential. Um, so on and so forth, so all of that is, is combined, is part of the master planning process, is no longer bifurcated to where you have one land use planning. And then another campus master plan just for the buildings, they're one and the same.
Right, so the processes that are, that are kind of. Embedded in the thing we're being asked to strike, are they actually also embedded in the campus master plan, that's my question.
Correct, so, in, in General Counsel Galvano can respond to this as well. Uh, but the master planning process is prescribed by statute and Board of Governor regulation, so it's highly regulated, so we follow those processes.
No, I understand that completely, I'm only asking whether or not everything that's in this is actually in the master plan process. That's the question, what are we, what are we actually getting rid of here?
The master planning process is both a statutory regulatory process that controls, so this is. Frankly, this is language that was at best subservient. Second, meaningless in terms of if we complied and put together our master plan.
So you're saying that.
So we're not really.
To the extent that this complies with the law, we lose nothing.
Right. And it doesn't control our master planning process.
Yes.
Super, okay, um, any other discussion, let's have a vote on the motion, all those in favor of approving a. Regulation amendment three dash five one zero two. College name is planning utilization policy, I'm gonna say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Hands, okay, any opposed? Okay, one opposed.
Two.
Two opposed, okay, two opposed. Next up, I need a motion, please, for approval of regulation amendment three dash seven zero zero one. New College of Florida directs.
Don't move.
Okay, Trustee Spaulding's movement, I have a second, please?
Second.
Second is Trustee Powerline, thank you, sir, alright, um, David Brickhouse, uh, asking to. Explain this, um. Posted, uh, regulation update.
Thank you, Madam Chair, the proposed regulation amends the direct support organization regulation and provides additional conditions, controls or requirements. For all of new college direct support organizations, so that would include the foundation. The property, uh, corporation and the financing corporations. Um, th- these provisions are consistent with those at other, uh, S U S institutions and for reference, uh, of the board. Nine other S U S institutions have delegated, uh, in some form or fashion. The president, to the president, the ability to remove directors at their DSOs. Um, seven of them, uh, in, in various ways to directly. Uh, corresponding to what we've done here, and the other change is, is capping. Uh, the ability of the Board of Trustee Chair to, uh, appoint three members to each DSO board. Any questions?
Any questions, any discussions?
I have a few things to say, I guess it's getting all me saying things, but nonetheless. Alright, so, you know, my chief concern with this involves long, long-term stability of the endowment, the regulation if adopted. Remains enforced independently who the president of New College is. Uh, so the president, no matter who they are, will have the power to dismiss the board and in so doing bypass. Any meaningful oversight, and that I see as a real threat to the endowment, and I don't see a benefit that outweighs that risk.
The. Is it, are you talking just principally about the power um, given to the president? You did not an issue with uh, at least one, but number three.
Well, that's next, but go ahead.
Go ahead, you both.
No, I, I, you know, I'm curious about the number three. How many other institutions have the number three appear in their DSO?
Uh, trustee McDonald, I don't know the answer off the top of my head. I can certainly find out.
I just, it seems weird.
So on that one, a lot of institutions will say, um, specifically they get one. Our regulation says that uh, no more uh.
At least.
At least one. And so, which is different to start from some of the other institutions, and so. What happened is we appointed, uh, Chair Jenks appointed two new trustee uh, members. Being under that provision that it was at least one, so she did another two that was three. Um, some of the foundation board members um, were upset and saying, is it unlimited? And suggested that, hey, why don't you, because nobody argued, two people she appointed, one is the chair of the county commission, and I see county was a huge supporter of it. Of of the college and another one is a very um, connected person in Taras over the county. So nobody was arguing substance of the appointments that made at any point in time. The question was, is it unlimited? And so what the suggestion was, that goes before you appointed, there's no sense in calling them. Why don't we change this regulation to say that Chair um, Jenks can appoint at least one, which is the existing language, but no more than three, ending her ability to appoint more people, and that was the compromise. That was a writ arrived at in that processes. The second part is USF, that language is in essence, USF. The the two of our uh, our largest university and um, one of our top uh, three largest universities. Um, after that, so our four biggest universities are. Uh, UCF, uh, Florida, Florida State, and USF. The two of the largest universities have the same provision, but the other seven universities of the twelve have some variation of that provision. And uh, there's never been an outcry, there's never been um, any kind of issue, and at any point in the time the trustees think that there. There um, is abuse, they can, you guys can rescind that ability. Um, but it's, and the reason it exists is that you just cannot have direct support or is an organization that is not pursuing. Um, the mission of the of the university itself, and so that's normally if it if and when it comes into use. It's to ensure that the foundation board members are pursuing the mission of the new college with the college itself's best interest at heart.
Anything other, uh, trustee Spalding?
Mr. Mickelson had her.
Go ahead. Trustee Spalding.
Uh, I I I had a couple of um. Questions, actually, and Madam Chair, if you allow me to, I think you probably go directly to to counsel. But uh, just to clarify, I think this is actually a quite straightforward. Um, action here, but as I understand it, uh, the 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 foundation is a. Direct support organization, which to say it's it's not independent. And it's a subsidiary of this board of trustees, and is that correct?
So it it's not. By definition of subsidiary, it's has its own statutory classification, it's a direct. Support organization and keywords are direct support. And it operates. For the sole purpose of fulfilling the goals. And uh. Mission of the university, and it's this board of trustees that establishes those. Those aren't broad organizations.
I'll retract detecting the word subsidiary, uh, but but. Does that not mean that we are responsible for that foundation?
To be certain, you, the, the, yes, you are, and they are responsible to the board of trustees.
And and am I, am I not further correct that we were the ones that are pointed by the government thus responsible to the Florida people to? Have a fiduciary responsibility? Was that, would that not cover the? Foundation as well?
Ye- yes, it would. Your, the foundation is established. To utilize assets to support your goals as a board of trustee.
And then, and then, I'm sorry, as I go through this logic, I read, the the, as I read the the Bog regulation, it seems to be pretty clear that the trustees. Um, of each institution um, shall establish. And that these direct support organizations must comply. And that it is our um, uh, our decision as trustees to create other. Conditions, controls, and requirements that we deem appropriate. Is that correct?
And guidelines, you are correct.
Um, and then lastly, uh, have we not uh, created a president to whom we delegate this responsibility of oversight?
Have we what?
I, we, we have, we have appointed a, a, we have chosen a president to whom we have delegated this responsibility. And am I correct that at any one time we could withdraw this or change this authority? Um, that we have temporarily given him to carry out what it says. Uh, his judgment in the interest of the college, which actually would mean on behalf of us, is that correct?
That. That is correct. If you decide that you want to change the guidelines and remove that authority, you can do that.
So thi- this seems to be pretty straightforward to me. I mean, the the notion that a direct support organization should be acting independently or seeking, thinking that it should be independent. When monies for the college, for the interest of the college. Um, that uh, that should be operating outside of our uh, responsibility, our delegate authority, the president does seem to be actually. Not only make no sense not to do that. Uh, but also a a direct aspect of of our sw- our sworn responsibility to the to the college. So I, I.
Right.
Straightforward, I I partly support it.
Thank you, I'm gonna recognize, I'm just. I'm gonna recognize after uh, vice, gonna recognize vice chair Saldy, but after that, it's trustee Mickelson, uh, trustee Bauerline, but. Since Mr. Saldy's vice chair, Sam went up, I'm.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to clarify one point, um, trustee Spalding, um, your, your uh, train of logic was um, very helpful and appreciated. Um, I just want to clarify one point, I I think. You said something, but I think you meant something slightly different. I I think you said that. Um, we delegate, uh, as a board, we delegate the responsibility to the president. Um, the the responsibility we have of oversight of the direct support organization and. Um, Mr. Galvano can correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't think we have the ability as a board to delegate our responsibilities, but I think what you meant to say. Was that we direct the president to implement uh, based on our um, oversight, and so um. Assuming that that's what you meant, I I agree with everything you said, but I just wanted to clarify for the record that. Uh, we as a board are not, can't delegate our responsibilities um, as a not-for-profit and and state board, but we can um. Based on the policy that we set, direct the president to implement. Um, the directives that we we put in place, which is. Inclusive of uh, proper operation of a direct support organization. And Mr. Galvano, please uh, clean me up on that. I just want to, uh, the way that was characterized, I think it it could give a different impression.
You are correct, and that's, and the way you explained it is how I believe trustee Spalding was. Articulating it and how I understood his his question. You are correct, we can't. Just delegate our authority, but you he give, but you can, under that authority, give direction to the president.
So I, I, you just, I completely completely agree, that's what I intended, which was why I emphasized and asked the question. Can we at any one time uh, change that policy? Yes, we're we're not giving away our authority. Uh, but he is acting on the, on behalf of our authority.
Perfect, thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, um, there was two other, um, hands up, um, trustee Mickelson.
Hi, uh, I have a few questions. Uh, I was wondering if the amendment is approved, what happens if the foundation doesn't update their bylaws?
They have to.
Yeah, trustee Mickelson, that they would be required to both. One, I would start with that the regulation supersedes their bylaws, and so they're required by law to to follow the rules and regulations set forth by this board. But it the the back of the regulation, at the end, you'll see that there's also directive. From this board to the board of directors of each E S DSO, um, compelling them to ensure that their governing documents do not conflict. With any rules or regulations adopted by the board of trustees.
Thank you. Also, uh. I was wondering. Uh, legal counsel Brickhouse, you talked about. The. Being consistent with those. It the majority of the other state university institutions. As a reason for bringing this forward, I was wondering if you could break down which other institutions use this language? And. How that's impacted their possible funding, as I know donors. Really want to ensure that their donations are going to a place where there are. Um, measures in place to ensure that it goes in the right. Direction.
I'm not sure that I understand that the second part of your question, trustee Mickelson, um, to i- in terms of the first part. There's um. USF and UCF both permit the the president to remove board members with or without cause. In their sole discretion, the uh, then there's five other foundations, UF, UNF, UWF, FAMU, and Forte Poly that present, uh, permit the president. Remove board members after some form of of either cause, which is defined term consultation with the board chair. Or executive committee. The only two institutions that do not have this provision or something like it is FAU and FGCU.
And it hasn't affected fundraising at all.
Okay, thank you, and I have one last question, uh. In this language, could President Corcoran remove Chair Jenks's appointments, and if so, how would that impact the board's power? Um, and. Over the. Foundation and um. The institution.
Feel free to to disagree with me, uh. Bill, but I I would say that the the chair's prerogative and and requirement to appoint at least one member is by statute. So her ability to appoint members is her prerogative and would supersede this board's delegation of authority for the president to remove any one member.
Thank you.
Right, mine, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, trustee Bauerline?
Yeah, yes, just, just a quick point. I I want to. State that I share trustee McDonald's concern over the consolidation of power. But. That. If we saw the president or anyone else in the upper leadership. Exercising that power in an arbitrary or capacious way or personal. Way, we we have the duty, the obligation to respond, and and that we will.
Right.
Madam Chair, I'd add that. Directing or authorizing the president to have this authority. Uh, does not diminish his fiduciary obligations to the board of trustees and to the university and everything else that goes along with that.
We could go ahead. So uh, seeing no more. Comments, then can we have a vote, please, on um. Approve to approve uh, regulation amendment three dash seven zero zero one, college Florida direct support organization, all those in favor. Of the regulation update, say aye, aye.
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 Let's see, a show of hands, might be easier.
Aye.
All right, and um, any opposed?
Me.
Uh, yes, to. Faculty trustee and student trustee. Okay, motion carries, thank you. Um, the last of the regulations up for approval, can I have a motion, please, for the approval of regulation amendment? Six dash three zero zero five, student code of conduct. Is there a motion made? Okay. Trustee Mackey, thank you. Is there a second on the motion? Trustee Clark, thank you, trustee Clark. Okay, Mr. Brickhouse? Have at it.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Final regulation, this amends and restates the student code of conduct for New College of Florida. Um, this strikes our student code of conduct and replaces it. We conformed. And then I want to say thank you to one of our sister uh, S U S institutions or a state university. Um, that we modeled this after, uh, primarily because they received the highest ratings of any public institution in Florida from the fire organization in terms of of free speech and and. Uh, civil discourse ratings for their code of conduct, and so we wanted to to take that gold standard approach. So happy to stand for any questions that the board may have.
Okay, we'll move to a second with having. Excuse me, discussion on the um. Uh, proposed regulation change for the student code of conduct. Uh, question. Move to the other, okay, uh. Trustee McDonald?
Yeah, was there much student comment in revising student code of conduct?
So this was, I I had conversations dating back to to the last student body president over a year ago of the approach to take. And adopt and conform FSU's approach and the recent rationale why. Um, and that was was met with agreement and seemed like a a good approach from the student standpoint. I've mentioned the same after. Um, student body president Mickelson took office, that again, that was our approach and and the concept behind it and the reason and rationale why. Uh, I've not received any other comment, and then we've received no comment. Um, during the the notice and comment period uh, for the regulation publication.
We actually, um, trustee McDonald have received numerous student input and faculty input as a result of the old. Regulation that is being advised. Um, it was in, it wasn't. Uh, probably, um, in compliance with really, um, what what should be done in a code of student conduct, so. And then how it came about since the faculty and some of the students were the discipline cases that we bought forward. Initially, under the old student code of conduct, they weren't allowing them to have representation. That's not, that's not, that's a violation. So in that dialogue. Um, and we had to just basically violate our own student code of conduct, which was in violation, so we weren't in violation. Um, and also, yes, and all of the, yeah, and so what we basically did is to gold standard of student code of conduct. Um, utilized it, and now all of it is in compliance with what we should be in terms of. Of what we're doing de facto. Um, on campus with our student code of conduct, even though our student code of conduct says we should not be doing it that way.
What does Olivia have to say?
Any other comments?
I have some comments, so. I, in fact, did not receive a copy of this, and so. Before this past week, I have not been able to look it over, uh. The code states that the code will be reviewed in its entirety every two years. By a committee that includes student representation, and I'm wondering beyond um, my predecessor. What did the student and faculty involvement look like in the creation of this draft?
So again, the the president mentioned that we've, we've had several comments informally regarding the the process deficiencies, the due uh, due process deficiencies. At that, um. The, the involvement of student government was really from trustee Keenan at the time, and in the conversations that she and I had. Um, as to the the reason and rationale of adopting the gold standard of of um, this model, and really that was in in directed her how to obtain copies of it and to provide any comment. Uh, that she or anyone else at student government had relative to those provisions. And I received none.
So. I think what I'm hearing is that there was really no involvement of. The students at New College in formulating the new language, is that correct?
The new language is is a conform from FSU. And so essentially the dialogue was, if you have any changes that you would like from the FSU language, please let us know, and we receive none. If that answers your question, trustee.
We did receive.
It just seems like a missed opportunity for civic engagement amongst the students.
Honestly, we're, we're, and even to that point, we did the response, but it's students who went before. Under that code of conduct that we currently have complained that it needed to be fixed. It, this is, this is inappropriate, that's what they said, this is inappropriate, but secondarily, to to trustee Mickelson's, Mickelson's point. We, we gotta get out of that, we, this is the gold standard. If it, if you guys want to come with suggestions and amendments to the new code of conduct. Please, we'll, we'll be open to all of it, all of the above, we'll, we'll glad to have that discussion. If someone wants to put pen to paper and give us some suggestions, a hundred percent supportive of trustee Mickelson.
And and from a legal standpoint, I'll add, there's not a lot of discretion. They, these. Conduct codes are are established, they answer to regulation, they answer to statute, they answer to precedent. And so it's, it's not as if you're just gonna start from scratch, you're basically. Um, confined to what is lawful and what is not lawful.
Okay. Um, but to be clear, there was, there were no hearings with students, faculty. Other staff members or um. Public meetings with students about the code of conduct and its changes.
It, it was discussed extensively with student affairs staff, with the professional staff that runs the conduct hearings. We had additional comments from faculty, staff, and students who participated in that in. Uh, those processes, and so all of that was taken into account, and again, no changes were offered or suggested, uh, but as the president said, we're happy to entertain uh, any of those conversations.
Hmm, may I ask why this didn't go before the committee on student affairs? May I ask why this didn't go before the committee on student affairs?
Uh we did not have a a committee meeting prior to this board meeting, I believe is the only reason.
Okay, I'm just wondering because there were pretty big items that should have had more time to be discussed.
Okay, uh any other discussion?
Read. This seems to be uh driven mostly by the process by which we carry out uh reviews and things of student activity and whatnot. Um and as I understand it, this is coming from FSU. So what I'm hearing from the president uh and and council is this, this now becomes a new base not prevent further a future amendment at at great length to to uh to improve that process. But my understanding, not being as familiar with the previous code of conduct, this is actually an improvement upon which we can now make further changes if necessary. Is that correct?
Okay, any other uh comments? Seeing none. And I have a show of hands please for on the motion to approve regulation amendment six dash three zero zero five student code of conduct. All of you, pay your attention, so we can see it. Okay, all those opposed? There's two, there's two uh and the motion carries. Alright, close the line schedule a little less. We're up to um the last item requiring a vote. And this is um for the approval of the new general educational curriculum at New College of Florida. I'd like to um have the motion made and seconded and then we'll recognize people to discuss it. So can I have a motion please to approve? Okay, thank you trustee Patterson. May I have a second please?
I'll second.
Okay, trustee Anderson, thank you. Alright. At this time, I invite uh president Corcoran and Manuel Lopez, the associate provost to explain this uh agenda items.
That all start in um but basically, this has been a very, very thoughts going all the way back in conversations with tons of faculty, tons of committee, tons of meetings. Uh the tremendous um thank you to Dr. Lopez um and uh Dr. Flackney and Dr. Ellis, who really were the the lion's share of leadership on bringing this together. The summation of what you have is what we've been talking about for the almost two years that we've been together. And that is that taking a new more curriculum, creating that logos and technay um the the kind of strands complying with the newly passed law by the legislature and assigned by the governor by your certain courses. So we're complying with that. But also having this, this uh you know, the merger, the Steve Jobs merger between, you know, tech uh logos and technay where, you know, as he says, it makes your heart sing. We had lengthy meetings, uh invited all professors to submit courses. Courses were submitted and basically where we landed in that logos technay is we created the 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 fact, the professors and faculty created a socratic experience, which is more of a, you know, okay, you don't want to have to choose. You just want, you know, us to say to you, here's a recommended uh curriculum path for you and that's the socratic experience. Um and that's and that's dictated and it's also compliant with five courses required by um this uh new law. And then the other one is if you don't want to do that, you want to have more choices, we created a menu of of forces. You could take, if you wanted to, if you wanted to describe experience, you could take any of these. It's all up to the student in 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 that second bucket and we have give or take about twenty five um or twenty six, if you count the socratic experience eligible courses of students you choose in those specific um criteria as dictated by the state. Um and so those are the the big higher um uh high level conversations. We maintained a communal course of the Odyssey, we maintain a communal course in technay um and all the rest um are what you see before you. I don't, you, would you like to add anything, Dr. Lopez?
No, I mean, this was a process that started like towards the end of the academic program uh and we had a deadline of September first. So it was a rush process. We had, we were already had to make this happen. So I want to thank uh uh professor Flackney, professor Ellis to really help with the whole process. Um and the idea is that the courses we're submitting will be the starting point for our gen net starting next year. These have to be approved by the board governors. Otherwise, we would not be able to offer them as part of the uh our new program in the academic year twenty five twenty six. But we will have possibility of revisiting the offerings every year as we see it.
Any uh discussions, questions?
Yes.
Okay, uh. Professor McDonald.
Thanks. I'll give you that it's very nicely packaged. Um but I've got some concerns. Uh here's one. Somehow the document that you're looking at has never been sent to faculty. Um now, that that's a problem. Uh you you received it over the weekend because it wasn't done. So it couldn't have been sent to faculty. Now, we just approved a new CBA and in that CBA section five point five covers the academic program and changes in the academic program. And and what it says is that the faculties are supposed to vote on changes to the academic program. It's supposed to be given an opportunity to vote before changes to the academic program remain. That never happened. The document didn't exist until Sunday or so. Um so, I don't know. I I don't understand why that didn't happen. I also don't understand why the academic affairs committee didn't see this. So it's a it's a, you know, it's a major change to the academic program and we didn't have a committee here in office. Um that seems very strange to me. Uh there are other serious problems with the content, you know. It is true that faculty were asked to submit courses for inclusion in the gen and curriculum. They did, and a small fraction of those courses made it into this. Um you know, there's been no explanation of how the residue became the residue. The process is totally opaque. People asked, why why are my courses not part of this? Um in fact, an art history professor prepared seven, sorry, eight proposals, all of which were rejected summarily. She asked in writing why and she's gotten no response from the provost office or from the president. Oh, my understanding is that's not actually an isolated incident. Now, there are also problems with delivery, you know. If you, it turns out that if you limit offerings the way you've done, you're undermining the ability of faculty to offer both a seminar type study, I mean, a real Socratic experience. By the way, the irony of the Socratic experience program is kind of overwhelming uh and and then also offering at the same time a complete set of courses for their independent disciplines, right? This is a problem. The calculation is actually straightforward to show you that this is going to a prob- be a problem, given the students we project versus the resources we have. Um the provost office has been made aware of the problem, but again, there's some silence here. Yeah, I don't understand why this is happening. There are serious problems with it. I think it should be, it should be referred to committee. It's my official kind of request is that this actually be referred to committee to work out the problems. In particular, the problem with the collective bargaining.
So madam chair, if I may just respond and clarify regarding the collective bargaining agreement, trustee that McDonald just corrected does require that there is consultation in the ability of of the faculty to have a vote. Um is part of the consideration. I would say that the administration met multiple times with multiple faculty members, went to the academic affairs committee, to the educational policy committee and discussed this at length multiple times at faculty senate meetings, including last week uh with the final presentation where they had an opportunity to vote yes or no. They did express their concerns at that meeting and had an opportunity to take a vote. They chose not to. We do not control whether or what they vote on. We can only present the information um that we have. And so all of that was afforded as part of the process that's required under the collective bargaining agreement. Happy to answer any other questions, but I just wanted to clarify those points.
This is remarkably misleading. The agenda for the meeting went out before we had the talk. How could we actually say we're going to have a vote without a talk? This is crazy. Go ahead.
Yeah, well, no, wait a minute. I'm the chair.
My mistake.
Okay, so please. Please allow me to do my job. There you go. Okay, I recognize uh professor um Lopez, please. Professor Lopez.
Okay, um well, I'll take first the compliments. So thank you for the packaging. Uh in terms of the process, uh I mentioned these at the faculty meeting. The deadline for submission for the gen net program was September first. I mean, we are as November, what, fifteen nineteen?
Nineteen.
So we were uh uh having to go through our process where we were definitely behind the ball and the lot of things. Uh in terms of the discussion with the processes, submitted uh to the faculty, I request for four proposals at the beginning of the semester. And we received a number of courses. And some faculty put some quality to it, it was uh would uh would basically pass that actually because some of these changes, the general education curriculum are imposing what we need to respond to the um the 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 box at a statute. So that was part of the process. The other process was to sort of fulfill a new vision for the academic program. With that in mind, we went through all the courses and while I, while I feel them, we will be able to fulfill the statute because they they just didn't fulfill the language. And also because a lot of them were advanced courses, I set up a significant number of them. So if you submit a course that was at three thousand, a four thousand level, by definition, could not be part of the gen net and this was a significant amount.
Um thank you.
We discussed this with the EPC and our committee too. And we had a meeting, I think it was right before Helene uh at Hurricane and we shared that with the EPC and our committee. They uh were responsible to, in any way they saw feasible, to reach out to the faculty about that meeting. I don't know if they reached out to you or to the faculty and if there was a report. Was there?
Yeah, there wasn't a report to the fact. I mean, there wasn't even a vote of the educational. So the educational policy committee, by the way, is the essentially, it functions in part as the curriculum committee at New College.
But what I'm saying is, we had a meeting with the EPC and our committee that was in charge of the committee last year. And part of the conversation is it was up to them to report to the faculty as they saw fit the process that we were, we had established. If they did or did not, that's for you to ask the committee. Um and in terms of uh the process, at the last faculty meeting, we did present the uh the the list of courses and we had a conversation. I was there and I tried to answer questions for like, it was forty five minutes. I would also say that part of this presentation was also shown at the previous faculty meeting. Where if I remember well, we showed a list of um and I I shared with Alberto, so that should be in the in the uh um agenda for that former faculty meeting because I sent it to him. And he was part of uh few of his slides that I shared. I did do the whole thing. I don't know how many slides are there. He wanted me to go at the faculty meeting, but I went through the most significant ones. So I did share part of this. He was sharing with the faculty and he's just like, again, he's cousin of the last faculty meeting. Now, in terms of process, granted. Given the timeline, I think we did the best we could. Like, we are definitely aiming to do better. One of the things that I respect with uh professor Flackney and professor Ellis is that we're gonna meet with the APCs so we can bring more clarity, more clarity with uh process. Because it is true that there was really no material time to sometimes get back to faculty to tell them this is a four thousand course level, this is how it gonna work out. This class doesn't fulfill the statute. But we are more than happy to be more transparent as uh as we move forward. We also discussed at the faculty meeting that this is the beginning of the process. This is something that we need to do uh because it's our revelation. But uh in the spring, we will have conversations with every single AOC and divisions so they can feel that they participate in a more uh possible of a kind of process.
Thank you.
I just, I just declared and then we're gonna start talking and circle. I think that trustees, the the process has been very elaborate. And the discussions on this started over a year ago. We started with the Odyssey course and the tech day course. And Odyssey course is now in its year two of its iteration. Um but so I'm just gonna say uh we we're confident in the process, we're confident in the input. We had input from uh the the new hire faculty, the old faculty. Uh no changes were made while I was in uh Italy with the governor. Some people are suggesting changes. I said, no changes. What what we have is going before the trustees and we sent you guys um which what was sent to you guys. And and there is also a balance, trustee McDonald. There's there's a lot of the trustees in the conversations oh going back over the area that you can look at. Well, there was a a clear directive that I received and somebody can argue otherwise that it's a core. A core means it's not every course you can possibly take. We didn't take any of those courses away from the opportunity for our students to take them, but we said we're gonna have a core. And so what is a core? I think even at twenty six or whatever courses that are in that, that's a, that's a big menu of courses. And 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 I think that some of the trustees would probably say that might be, even even that might be a little too big. But but we're also balancing logistics, timing, all of those com- components. But I think what you have before you is an elaborate process, an elaborate product. And I think where we are right now is excellent. Um but to professor Lopez's comment, it doesn't mean that the February meeting, we could come back before you and say, hey, we're gonna take this one and add this one. So we can continue to have that discussion, but we have to move forward. We are under the gun and that gun is the law in Tallahassee.
Thank you. Um I saw uh you recognize trustee Smalling for discussion with agenda. Your hand is up.
Yeah, I'll 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 uh uh it's it's it strikes me that this this process has been going on for some time and uh it's come before us and I've talked, I mean, I've talked to faculty. I've had a lot of conversations uh about this and I want to emphasize that it's a framework. And I understand our, it seems to be our job as trustees is to drive that 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 framework uh and then get the faculty to uh submit courses and start thinking in that direction. I mean, the um one thing that's not been mentioned here is that the the uh chart your course program which I thought was poor, to put it in in direct term. Um this replaces that. It's a huge improvement. Uh but it doesn't necessarily create new additional requirements. It just takes those and and organizes them. Uh but this is really being driven by the state requirements and the blog, which is president corporate has mentioned is a is a uh clear um requirement that we need to meet. Um but the it's a framework going forward. Look, I I for one actually would prefer a stronger framework, to be perfectly honest. This is a a a good compromise uh for the college, which I will also note respects all of the unique traditions and um uh unique uh and peculiar uh in interesting ways of of how new college operates. Doesn't touch any of those things at all. Uh but it's pushing the 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 faculty towards more excellence in their in their programs. And I, this is a good framework. We should get it going. We come back to it and 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 uh come back to it over and over again. Uh I think these are um uh you know, these are broad discussions or or broad descriptions of classes. Uh I'd be interested in seeing uh more substance in some of the syllabi and and particularly with the courses. I in particular am interested in the the uh general required courses for the humanities and technay. I'd like to see those fleshed out more um and and know that what they're going to uh what they're going to cover and what might be included in those. But I would understand that's something that is that we can then do uh from our end as a board of 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 trustees working with the president. And then uh the faculty for their part are uh creating their own courses and syllabi and and things like that. And we come to a nice agreement as to a as to move forward. But this strikes me as an excellent framework uh to do so. A a year's conversation of trying to balance um emphasis on the humanities but also emphasis on uh the sciences in this combined way. So I I commend this. And it strikes me as a very, very nice way to do it with plenty of opening uh to how to flash these things out, the enduring human uh uh human questions, for instance. Uh but like I said, I I would like to see, and I hope that I can work with uh uh you know uh to 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 really flesh out those common, especially required courses, the the entry of the to 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 really flesh out those common, especially required courses, the the intro, the humanities, intro to technae. And I, my, my question would be whether we can do that. But a- a- as we go. But I think we've got to get this framework up for approval so we can now move forward.
Thank you. Thank you, trustee Paul. We're about to call the question. I'm going to recognize trustee Bauerline and then trustee Mickelson, trustee Bauerline.
I'll, I'll be quick. I, I would just communicate to the the faculty submitting courses that, and I've communicated this to President Corcoran and the leadership, that general education courses cannot be advanced courses. They cannot be special topics courses. Then they have to be few in number. The general education model is in part designed to provide all the students at a college a roughly common experience. A common set of subject matters. I actually think twenty six courses is too, too many. But I'm, I'm certainly willing to to go with, to go with that number to compromise. But on on the generality of of things, that's, that's a, a, a strict, it's broad, but it's a strict criterion for me.
Thank you, trustee Mickelson. Any comment, last comment?
Yes, I just wanted to clarify regarding the faculty vote in the contract we just ratified. What is the exact? Would voting on this today be fulfilling our responsibility to the contract? And if so, apologies. Sorry, I just wrote down some notes last minute. What satisfies as faculty engagement in these discussions around curriculum?
We just, I think that's what we were kind of getting in a circle and that discussion of all of the involvement and all of the votes and all of the compliance. Just suffice it to say that we are, we are in compliance. We are a hundred percent in compliance.
Thank you. We've got a motion, a second, and we have discussed this at length and we have our time constraint. So I'm going to ask for a show of hands of approval of the new general education curriculum at the College of Florida. All those in favor, raise your hands, say aye. Aye. Aye, okay. All opposed, like sign.
That would be me.
Okay, two. And thank you. The motion has passed. We are through with our agenda. I just want to thank everybody for but I just want to thank President Corcoran and trustee Patrick and Bill Galvano and David Brickhouse and Coach and all the staff, provost and Scoodles and everybody who cleaned this place up after two, not one, but two big, I was for sure. So I'd actually ask for a round of applause for everybody. That we're, we're lucky that people get to. So thank you, everybody.